Red?
Yeah.
Lucky Red?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one thing on my mind. The dispatch was a regular order of business of the meeting tonight because you called us early for its discussion on retirement and I'm turning the meeting over to trustee Hakrow, chairman of the personnel committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would invite everybody to just speak up when you wish to on this part of the meeting. As you know, within the next year, we're going to be losing a good number of valuable employees. And I think it's important that we plan yesterday for that thing that's going to be happening. You've got to start some searches and we've got to get the best people we can. The point is not a small community in terms of his business and we need some competent people to take over. And therefore, let's just open it up. This morning, I was in Bev's office and we got a call from Bill Berry. He had those, the electrical branch for us and whatever. And Bill saw George in late class and tweeted at him, I think. And called this morning to again offer his services as a person that seeks out individuals that might be competent for our needs. And he will do it according to any recipe that we want at home. In other words, he will, if we don't want somebody, say, from the southeastern part of the United States because things are so different down there, he will not search that area. He will search places and different kinds of resources that we want. And he did give Bev a list of 14 points of things that we ought to be looking at. Was it 14, Bev, you mentioned 14?
Yeah.
You mentioned 14.
I have lucky 13 written down.
Okay.
Lucky 13.
And I think that's one of the things we have to talk about is finding somebody to find people for us. But we have to have a general idea of the kind of person we want. Do we want one person? Do we want two people? What do we want to fill the jobs that are specifically going to be left by Bev and Bobby? There are others leaving also. I mean, Bev has been hard at those positions, but those are the two most immediate ones. To make it even more complicated, the retirement incentive, which I have got to report a little bit later on, is more likely going to cause them to have to leave earlier than they plan on. Because the window period is what, the end of December, basically.
Right.
That's not, that's a lot of time when you're searching for somebody to go away. So.
Can you give us any kind of figure of what he would charge for these services?
Not, not at that point, no. Is he a head miner?
That's what they are usually.
No, no, he isn't.
His perm, his perm does a PLN program for us.
Right.
And they have done this for other communities. And they, they know our needs because they've worked with us for the last eight, nine years in a PLN program. So he knows our needs. And he knows, you know, what the community, what he thinks the community needs and what we add to it. But when I saw him in Lake Blas, he said, he said that they were willing, his perm was willing to do this for us. He didn't give me a price either and I didn't ask him. I said, you know, we got a meeting Monday night and we'll, how we discuss this Monday night. And he said, I will get Bev and Bev out of time.
Well, when I talked to him this morning, I did not want to ask him because I specifically don't know how much of his time we are and how extensive the service will be. And the price does depend on that.
Would he shorten our length of time trying to find somebody over his length of time?
No, I think he would just broaden the scope of territory and kinds of people where you are. And he has several suggestions as to how we might begin the interview process.
So what they'll do is he'll go out after we give them a set of specifications or qualifications or how you ought to put it. So this is the, what we're looking for in this person. They'll go out and they'll pre-visit. And then the resumes will be submitted to Bev. They will go through the resumes and probably narrow it down to like four or five people.
More than that.
Or whatever.
Because we'll be having, we'll be having a larger group of people on the first set of interviews. And most of those may be done, to save money, may be done in like teleconference meetings or telephone interviews. And at that point, then we would start narrowing it to four or five or six people if we want to talk to them.
I guess it's my feeling. I mean, if they've done this before, I mean, none of us have really, I mean, yeah, we've interviewed for different personnel in the village, but nothing of this stature. If they've done, done this before for other villages or municipalities, I can't see where it would hurt to have their insight. I think we're all going in this kind of blind side of the wheel. And any, any help that we can get, I think we'd appreciate it.
I think we have to stop tonight, John. What is it we want?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great thing.
An administrator, Bev clerk, whatever it is we're looking for, whatever the title of the person is we're interviewing.
I think we gotta set ourselves a timeline here.
Well, one of the things we talked about today was getting this thing in place so that we can actually start reviewing applications and interviews by the first of September. That doesn't give us a lot of time. Two months, it's two months.
And then we have somebody in place by the first of October?
First or, or.
I mean, at least to start training.
First of October at the very latest. If you want somebody to move them for two months, you can get them. What are we looking for?
Nobody here in the village is going to fill those shoes, you know what? I didn't say that. If they could submit.
Could possibly be.
It could possibly be. That's right.
It all depends what we're looking for. If you're looking for a combination of both?
Administrator.
An administrator like we used to have years ago? I mean, I guess it's all that the board's feeling, you know? Can, can both jobs be fit into a 40-hour week?
I think that's how we, depends how we tailor the jobs or how we modify other current jobs. In other words, if we took, say, Bev's job and Bobby's job and made them into a job, some of the guys that are out in the field would have to assume more supervisory type responsibilities.
And is that going to be different?
Well, that's part of what we have to decide.
Do we know that Bobby is retired?
We're not sure. We know he's retired and we don't know when. I mean, it could be, Bobby may be here for quite a while.
Right. So doesn't that change our decision with regards to Bev's job? I mean, we sort of have to have two scenarios. If we start today, we have to have two scenarios. We have to have one with Bobby still here and one if Bobby retires.
Why? I know we go with that scenario.
Well, let's say Bobby works another five years, right?
Yeah, no, but let's go with that scenario. Fine. Bobby continues to do what he does, but the other person now sits there being Bobby's boss and learning.
And working with Bobby.
Working with Bobby.
Certainly is an option.
The job was brought to us, he or she was here.
I don't think Bobby knows who he's going to choose.
No, Bobby doesn't.
I've got him a couple of different eyes.
That kind of limits us on our choices.
He's going to the doctor, when's he going to, Dr. Pitt, Arlington?
In August.
In August, sometime in August and that will, that's when you'll make the decision.
Well, his eyes are getting better, which I'm happy with.
Not very satisfied.
Yeah. So, I think it's, I think we have to know some of the things that you're interested in having in a place. I know one of the things that I talked about with Bev today, you know, this, this village has two pretty important holiday celebrations that we conduct. One being the Fourth of July and the other being the Christmas Eve. And Christmas season, Bev basically is taking care of itself. Now, that's not nearly as large in the amount of time that's involved in it and the things that are done as the Fourth of July, but it's still something that's going to have to be done. You just can't, there aren't as many volunteers out there as there used to be. And Brian and Mike and all these guys are getting tighter. They've done a big job. And I, you know, why couldn't whoever this person is be the overall responsible person for these things? Not that that person would have to organize the parade or organize this or organize that, but that first part of that person's job would be responsibility for Village Dance.
I had something different in mind, but that's, that's not a bad idea. I hadn't met him, no. We, and we're off the subject. I was thinking of hiring Bev to coordinate the supply for us.
Well, you can do that, but maybe you're going to have to, that's another, another body.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
And maybe that's the way to do it, too. So, we're not, we don't have as many large events in the city as we do either, you know?
Sure, we need somebody to fill that spot.
Yeah, if you look at something that Bev had photocopied for us, I guess a while back, it was like, oh no, I guess it was only a couple of weeks ago, June 4th. Duties and functions of a full-time village clerk is established by the Board of Trustees September 3rd, 1996. It seems to me that on this list, there are many important things that we would need to continue having someone to do. And, and certainly, I would think if we wanted to add something about perhaps organizing or coordinating the holiday celebrations, I think it could go onto this list. But when you look at this, this seems to be, to be very important and I'm not sure that we have someone right now who's ready to step up and fill these shoes. So I kind of agree with Brian. If we want to add that to the list of duties, to me, it seems like we really need to keep on with what is on this list.
We work from that list.
Well, work from this list, I, I was reading this over earlier and if you look at the duties that are on this page and the duties that are in the code book under administrator, they're very similar.
Yeah.
And I marked a few that I think are different that I don't think necessarily Bev is doing right now in her particular capacity, but it certainly is something that could go under the title of an administrator. So, to me, maybe we need to decide if we're going to continue to work from this sort of a list, what percentage of a full-time job is formed by the duties that are on this list? And if this is a 40-hour week job, then maybe it's going to take one person just to do this. You know, I don't know.
Well, I think we have to, you're right, but I think we have to also consider that the whole office is going to be changing within the next year. You know, the majority of the office is going to be changing and how those, how those jobs may be re-titled.
They could be.
Or the job descriptions at least.
Right, but they don't necessarily have to do with.
But they may assume some of those responsibilities so that the other person can assume other responsibilities, more of a managerial kind of a thing.
Then we probably need to look at their job descriptions as well.
We have to look at all.
And see what percentage of a full-time job they're actually doing also.
We also have to talk to civil service, I think, though. We'd have to get into that.
Yeah, both of those positions are civil service.
Pardon me?
Both, correct, both of those, the current positions are civil service.
Everything in the opposite.
Mm-hmm.
But they always have that little statement at the end that says, and other related duties. Right. And I think we got to talk with our sen as well in terms of what, what he feels is necessary in the office and number of hours per week. So shifting things around might be a very good idea. It's just that I think that we can't give any one person more than what would occupy them for a full-time position.
You're absolutely correct. But we also can't leave ourselves open to things not getting done. We've got to make, make sure that whatever, whatever we decide, the village is covered.
Right.
We're not going to be around, you know, two years now or whatever it sounds like, but the village is still going to be here.
Would that be a good first step, though? Would that be a good first step? Look at the people that we actually have with function and capacity in the office and look at how their duties can be shifted and then decide whether or not we can continue to run the office with one person, either doing Bev's particular job or a combination of Bev and Bobby's job and see whether or not we can, if the job will fit one person.
I think we have to look at what we want in, in personal persons first.
Sure. Well, yeah, and then you're going to look at the time.
And then look back at.
Because until we decide whether we're going to go with one person or two, we might either sit down and look at a list such as this one and see what the actual duties are and map that out.
Do they advertise in these trade papers? Is there a lot of vacancies and stuff? Is there a big demand at those? And I don't know anything about it.
Neither do I.
That's, that's why we're looking.
That's why I say, that's why I say the help from Mr. Berry. You know, I think all of us are kind of in the dark on, on the subject. I mean, we're just.
Doug might need to know a little bit more. I mean, you're in contact with more people from different villages and stuff. Is there people in the wings waiting for to fill these positions or?
Well, I wouldn't think that they're waiting in the wings, but what I'm thinking is that you might find someone from another industry who has transferable skills, same skill sets that'll be of use to you. And one opportunity might be the recent downsizing in IBM across the lake. I'm sure that wasn't all blue collar jobs there. I bet you there was some white collar positions.
Oh, yeah.
There's going to be some people that are at that juncture in their career where they have valuable skills and they're probably very nervous right now. Probably IBM has organized some kind of large outplacement program for those people. And if you were to tap into that, see if they are indeed doing that, tap into it at the direct pipeline.
Good at the events. Do you need to get the rest of that?
The only thing we got was, we had a conference table.
He didn't send it.
Oh, is he going to?
He's going to probably. So maybe we should just start with the office. Sit down, look at all the positions that we have, all of the things that they do on a daily basis and then start sort of putting a flow chart together as to who does what and who's going to continue or change or, and map that out first and then sort of branch out from there to Bobby's position.
We've got to get Bev.
Before any of that, though, I, I think we have to decide what it is we want for a leadership position. Because maybe we don't need two people. Maybe we only need one.
Right.
But we don't know that until we decide what we want the personal persons to do.
Right, that's what I'm saying, John. Because if you, if you start, if you start rearranging what people in the office do now like you were suggesting before.
No, no, not now.
No, 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 no. Look at what the people, what the positions will be that will need to be filled in the office.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? You just mentioned before that perhaps reassigning some duties within the office in the future. Not now, but in the future.
With new people.
Correct.
Yes.
And so, take a look at, I think that's going to help us to get a handle on, in other words, what we do want in this particular position in the office. And then I think once we look at maybe how we're going to rearrange some of the duties, it might be easier to come up with some sort of framework for a leadership position.
I look at it exactly the opposite way. We have to look at what we want in that position first.
Yeah.
And then, and then look now.
So you're not going to use the job description that we have?
We can use what is in that job description as part of it. Oh, yeah.
I just, I think we're saying the same thing in two different ways, John. I think that we're all, we're all coming back to what needs to get accomplished in the office.
Well, not just the office, but the leadership position of the village, the paid leadership position of the village. Not elected position.
So you're talking about, then, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. Are you talking about the person that we get? Let's suppose it's one person. That person will be working out of the village office on Lake Street or that person will be working out of the trailer over here with Bobby's?
That's, I would say out of the office generally, but also depending on how the infrastructure is, would be assuming the upper managerial parts of what Bobby's doing.
Sure, I understand what you're saying. Right, right. I do think we're saying the same thing in two different ways, though.
Because I believe that we have, we have to leave somebody at the village office.
No question.
Because, because of the complaints that come in during a day.
In which case.
From employees or from the village.
And that's what's on this list. Exactly. And for this reason, I think that you're absolutely right. We, we need to leave that person in the village office. And then with that said, once we look at the office structure and what kind of person we do want, we'll have a better idea of what to tell Bill Berry that we're looking for.
I think we've got to go past it, John. I think we've got to go from the top end down. We really have to.
Start, start.
We don't have much of your time to look at the bottom line.
December 31st.
So you're not going to give him anything that's on this list, is what I'm saying?
We may give him that whole list.
Well, that's what I'm saying, John. We're saying the same thing in two different ways, I think.
You want to start at the bottom.
No, no, I don't want to start at the bottom. No, 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 no.
That's what it sounds like you were saying.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry if I'm not explaining myself very well.
I think what we have to do is we have to go to Bill Berry and say, or Bill Berry, whoever it happens to be, say, this is the job that we want done. Here are the things we're looking for in that job.
Great. And my suggestion is how to go about getting that list to give to Bill Berry. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
And that's what we're supposed to be here tonight talking about. What it is, we want of that person, you know, number one person, number one thing I can think of, we want that, that person to be user friendly. You know, that person's going to have to be the.
They have to be a good leadee, basically.
Within, within the village council itself, but also with, with the public.
Right, right.
That, you know, going to have to, going to have to work with people.
Going to have to have some managerial, managerial skill.
Very strong, a lot of personnel managerial, that's going to be a lot, very strong.
I, I'm not too much worried about Bobby's position in a way because I think, I think that our lead, like, informant electric, informant chief to a plant operator, basically right now, sewer plant, Bobby has very little input there.
I agree.
Because, because the guy, Tommy is doing a great job out there. Water plant the same way. The only time that Bobby gets involved down there is when having a technical breakdown. And I think that, I think we can look at that, that issue. Electric, I think the people qualified there now start to fill it, start to look for it.
However, George, those people have got to be responsible to somebody.
That's right. And that's what we've got to decide on.
And that's, and that's the Bobby part of his job.
Right. Oh, yes, definitely.
But I think, I just think we can combine it.
Well, it's very possible we can. But I also think that maybe, going back, going back again to what Kelly was talking about, we've got to, as new people come into the village office for it, their job descriptions might have to be changed somewhat.
And I agree. Well, we got timeline on that. That's not till next June.
No. That's not till next June. Maybe sooner.
Well, one maybe sooner, but I, but I, yeah. But I, I sort of agree with you, John. We need to have a set of qualifications that we're looking for and acquisition.
Which many of which are in here.
Most of them are.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
We just got to find doing it.
Right, exactly.
I think we need, I think we need to take the duties that Bev does now.
Plus.
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 And maybe minus a few things.
Yeah, redeligating them.
Well, you can do that.
Yeah.
You take the whole list. If we re-deligiate them later, then that's.
If we decide one person, we have to add to that list those parts of Bobby's job that are pretty strictly managerial.
Right.
He will be the supervisor of the sewer department.
Or she. Or she. He or she will be.
He or she.
Thank you.
She will be the supervisor of.
No, because I think George's point is very well taken. My, what I was trying to say earlier was we have other people who are covering a lot of the operations in the village. We don't have someone who's going to be ready to cover what's in this package.
Within the village now.
Correct.
You're probably right.
And if we don't fill that position with many.
But there may be somebody that lives right here in the village, who knows?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
We don't know that, yes.
Right.
That's why we're going out.
That's why we, well, we, we're down to this. Do you want to hire Bill Berry or don't you? I think it's, that's the point we need to look at that.
I think we have to look at it, but I think we've got to kind of wait on saying actually yes until we find out about how much time of his is going to be involved and what the, what the price tag is going to be.
Well, let's look at his fee. That's a big thing.
You know?
They don't get it for nothing.
He sounds as though he's willing to give us as much or as little time as, as we want.
Well, he's going to call you in the morning?
Yes.
Well, I think we need to settle that issue. Now you've pushed us down to 15th of July until we make it. Now I'm looking at a timeline here.
But how come we're there, George? We don't know, we don't have any of the parameters.
I've been saying, I've been, I'm just telling you, we're down to the 15th of July.
Well, can you schedule a special meeting?
That's, that's the next question. Do you want to do this?
To, to at least decide.
Just for that purpose.
Just for that purpose. Because we don't want to wait too long and we have to. I, I think we're in good shape in time-wise as it is. I think you can move along, all right?
It's a good day for whatever you hear, though.
Anytime.
About Wednesday morning? Wednesday morning?
This week?
Mm-hmm.
Good time.
First thing in the morning?
You think that's, gives you that time to?
Oh, she's not going to be here.
Unless you have it before 6:00 a.m.
Wow. How about?
Well, Thursday morning.
About next Monday.
Thursday morning, though.
Next Monday.
Friday?
Next Monday is out.
Next Monday is out?
Is next Monday morning good?
Oh, yeah.
Next Monday morning?
That's not, that's better for me.
Eight. Eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty? You want a coffee?
Yeah, I'll buy a coffee. I'll buy it on it.
Okay.
Eight thirty next Monday at the village office.
Yeah.
Good.
All right. Don't sit there, John.
And that's all of that.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you, Lord. I'm trying to find my calendar and mark that eight.
Mayor Reddick? Yes, ma'am. Could I ask that you deviate from the agenda and allow Andre LaBarge to make the presentation to the board? I certainly will.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for awarding the bid to the LaBarge Agency. We will work very hard at trying to make certain that the village has the proper coverages. I had the opportunity on Friday to take a ride around the village with Bev Bayshard and she was so kind to take me to all the locations and met a lot of people. I'll never remember the names, but I'll get them down sooner or later. However, in working through the set of specs and visiting, visiting the different locations, I have found that there have been some omissions on the set of specs. And there are a few things that, that I need to bring to this board tonight. First of all, I'm finding some discrepancies. I had a long conversation with your consultant this morning and Frank and I agreed that there needs to be some work done on your building values. You have an industrial appraisal, which he worked with. I, I did not see that, okay? That's fine. However, under the industrial appraisals, then you have an engineer, you had some values from your engineer.[1725.57] The values period, he faxed me some information that came from the office, from your office, and just as an example, because I really wanna start out on the right page on this. I do not want to cause any problems. But I noticed that the wastewater treatment plant, from the office, he received $3,500,000 value. He then received $3,700 value. The specs read $5,281,943. Got quite a discrepancy here. Then I go to the stabilization and oxidation, when he sent it to me, he put question marks on that. And then we go to the public works building. This, from the office, it reads $250,000. However, the specs read $181,000. Bear in mind, you're on replacement cost. You need to be insured to full value. Then you go to the rec center. And under the rec center, from the office, was $1.5 million. The specs read $1.8 million, 224, or $1,824,374. So you can see that I'm having a little bit of difficulty. I mean, I've bound coverage, you know, but I need to really have these figures accurate. Then we go to the water tree, the water plant. While we were at the water plant, we went into the first building, and that was fine, and that passed $4 million, $4,800,000 on it. I then was able to go to, I think I wrote down the vault building, but it's the Zebra Muscle Building. For those, if you do use the word vault, that's fine. Was not even included on the specs. There's no coverage on that building as we speak, okay? So that's why I'm here tonight, because I just immediately said to Bev that I have to come here. The bath house, we visited the bath house on Montgomery Street, and this needs to be added.
Not added?
That, the new building was, the new bath house was not added, okay? I'm not here to take anything, you know, I'm here to work for you because I refer, I now have to have this all in order. And, I mean, I've bound coverage on what was on the specs, and we can get this cleaned up. I need to have some direction as to the true value of all of these properties, so I can go from one through nine locations that we have and have a proper set of values, whether it's with the engineer, I work with the industrial appraisal. I need to have something that is comfortable for everyone, because we are on replacement cost, and you need to, we need to finalize this so that we put that behind us. And you'll have to advise me as to, you know, where I'm gonna get these values from. You have an engineer, I even called your engineer today. And I found out that he was in the village office this morning, and I hope that maybe he's here tonight, but I don't know him.
Yeah, Doug's here.
Nice to meet you, Doug. Okay, so you can decide who I'm going to work with and how I'm going to obtain these figures, but you do have a professional service, your industrial appraisals. I've worked with industrial appraisals before, and I'm very satisfied. I've not had problems with the industrial appraisal, but I just need to have some finalization. I then move on to the fire department. In the set of specs, I found that when I was working with the consultant after our run, I came down here on Monday of last week, and we were going down through some things, and I was verifying, and I found out that your ambulance was not on the set of specs, okay? And some of you have been made aware of that. And that's $162,000. However, you also have replacement cost. So you, 10 years in newer, they have to be insured at replacement cost value, not market value, and not actual cash value. The office was so gracious, Mary was so gracious, has to supply me with the replacement cost values with the support of the other departments. And that went, and don't quote me on this, but anyhow, I, because I, fingers change, figures are changing so quickly right now. I worked on it Thursday night, and I had $1,500,000 worth of values on your vehicles, and I believe the set of specs were for $939,000. So your policy reads, and your specs read replacement cost. However, I don't think the step was taken beforehand to have replacement cost values brought up to date. So I have bound coverage on the true replacement cost. Then I went to the fire department, and I went to the fire department. When I was at the fire department, all the ancillary equipment that's mounted to the vehicles, I'm not sure if the value of that vehicle that was given to me, that was supplied to me like with the ambulance, of $162,000, I believe that replacement cost on the vehicle. However, you have your defibrillators, you have, you have mounted equipment that's on there. That should be added on additional. And then I put, on my policy, it would read the 1995 ambulance ambitions, in this hypothetical, 1995 ambulance, and you would have on it your value, and then I put also what is mounted on there. So we really need to specify it, so we don't have any gray areas. Any, and then there was a blanket coverage that was on the set of specs that read for $200,000. Those are items that are under $500. Anything over $500 has to have a breakout. So we need to specify that. I then met with Mr. Rivers at this point, we were at the firehouse, and I brought to his attention that there is no coverage for physical damage, and Benny was there also. And we went over the, I believe that the 1968 LaFrance pumper is the one that has been refurbished. Am I right on the?
Yes, it's a 60, it's older than that, 60.7.
Oh, okay, it reached 68 on the set of specs. However, the year's not the issue. There's no physical damage covered. And there's no physical damage on the LaFrance pumper, the Ford chemical truck, the LaFrance ladder, the LaFrance pumper, and the 90 International pumper. Now, these vehicles are 10 years older, okay? They're over 10 years old, I'm sorry. Therefore, you should go to actual cash value. You could call LaFrance, you seem to deal with LaFrance. You could find out what the actual cash value is on these, if you so choose to insure them, okay? But just so that we're all clear, that we make certain that this is all upfront. The set of specs also did not include your vehicles, three new vehicles. There's a 2003 Ford police interceptor, the 2002 Chevy Silverado dump, and the 2002 Chevy pickup with the utility box. Replacement cost must be increased and reviewed annually on a 10-year and newer basis for your policies each year. Also, I found, well, I didn't find it. It was put on the list, it was added, that the 2002 Sweepster of $4,300 was not included in the specs. So those are some of the issues that I'm dealing with for binding coverage. I would like to have your input as to how you would like me to handle these areas that need to be addressed immediately.
What about when you came up with the first figures? You said one was commercially appraised at one figure, and then the other one was appraised at a? Could you average those and come to?
No, we have to, what it is, is you have to take the square footage of the build and the construction, the type of construction it is, which has already been done by your industrial appraisal, and come up with a replacement cost. You cannot just go and take a hypothetical figure, okay? And then, once that I get this set up, so that we don't have this problem again in this village, is that I highly suggest that you take and put an inflation guard on your policy of 4% or 5%, whatever the current percentage is, at that time, and then we will not run into this. It's going to be rocky at first, but we'll get it smoothed out, because I just don't have this problem. But I really have a problem with working on this right now and feeling comfortable for you people, 'cause I'm here to represent you.
It has to be accurate.
Yes, it does. Andre, can you get us some figures on, updated figures on the vehicle and the building and whatever in the next couple of days?
We have to do what we have to do.
You do have to.
Thank you, thank you for working with me and hearing me out. What I'd like to have permission to do is to work, can?
Doug.
Doug. I'd like to have permission to work with Doug, because Doug is very familiar with some of these buildings that he's, you know, and then I can work back with Frank, and I can work, because he has the industrial appraisal where he had it, and work with Bev, you know, so that we can bring this together and come to have it worked out properly. And then we'll come back. I have no problem coming back to you and telling you exactly where we're at and what needs, you know, what we've done.
Is it worth having damage on, like, the fire trucks, Walt, maybe you can answer this. You've got a fire truck that's 20 years old. Is it worth having damage insurance on it?
Well, let's put it this way. If your damage is to the point you can't use it, and you don't have coverage, then you have a truck you can't use.
It's almost, seems like it would be better to put some of the risk back on the village and say, it's like having a car that's 10 years old.
Say you were, say you were broadsided, some way it wasn't insured, so you had no way of recovering it, broadside on the pump panel. The pump isn't open, your truck is gone.
What you need to do on those vehicles that are 10 years older is take and get the actual cash value. Have the chief work on this, or whoever, you know, that is assigned to it. Have them work on it and give me, they're gonna go and, they can just call LaFrance and say, "Your specs, you know what your specs are? What is it worth? If it's worth $35,000 or $40,000?" Because if you had, like, your ladder, your lateral truck, I mean, if you have, if you lose that, you know, you don't have any coverage on it. So you're going to be looking for something else in the market, and you're probably going to pay $35,000, $40,000. Why should you have your taxpayers have to pick up that cost when it might cost you, I don't know, it might cost you $500 or $1,000, I'm just using this figure. It might not cost you that much, but, I mean, I'm just trying to get my point across. What I would suggest is that we take, and we ask, you ask your fire chief or whoever to get the values of those six vehicles. Present them to me, I'll get the quote, I'll come back to you, and you can say, yes, we want the 1967 pumper insured. However, we do not want the ladder truck insured. You can make that choice, and I think that's what you probably should be doing. Then I'll have it on file record, and you'll have it, and we'll both agree as to what you're going to insure.
Doug, do we need to have any action on the, on the document we dug through over the week? Or Walt, you just, so, go ahead and do that on our behalf.
The chief is here and the engineer is here, so.
Walt, you talked your other day out, now you gotta call these.
Bruce will do it. I'm gonna have to retire. Bruce will do it.
Thank you, Andre.
Okay.
We appreciate you getting this information.
You're welcome.
We'll help us.
And the new vehicles were pretty well set, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Open the meeting for comments and public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do it at this time.
Go ahead, Eric.
Couple of issues here. First, I'd like to give the board a minute. This is asking, be you too, by, related to the water. It seems that you've changed the regulations on how you pay for water and sewer. It was kind of explained to me, and I kind of understand most of it, but it appears that I'm paying $41.90 a month on apartments that have nobody in there, which means, it appears to me, that I'm paying for something for nothing. She explained to me why that is. I didn't quite understand that, why I'd be paying for a place if there's nobody in it for water and sewer. The, they have charged me for a house, my house, I have three apartments in it, two of which are no longer apartments, they're my house. I'm being charged $80 a month for two apartments, which are really one. I should be charged two instead of three, I believe. I think it has to be addressed, like, she told me that if somebody moves out of one of my apartments, I pay $41.90 a month for three months, or something like that, before they stop charging me for that. She said, because people are moving out, and then you rent it a couple of days after the bill comes in, and they're not being charged that. Well, I don't think that's correct. I think they're being charged it in the first electrical bill that comes in, which means they're paid for what they've done.
Who's she?
I think it's Carolyn, isn't it? She's trying to explain to me, I don't know if that was her place to do that. I'm not saying she did it, you know.
Well, I just wanna know what you mean.
It's, I believe it's Carolyn. And I don't really know if I understand what she was trying to tell me, so, but I think I do. I think that you're charging me for something that I'm not getting anything for. And I would like to have it addressed, and if possible, I think it needs to be changed in a legal manner. Why would you be charging me for something for nothing?
First of all, if your apartment's empty, and you have done away with that apartment, then you should have probably notified the village.
We did it two years ago. We had no, we've not paid for it in two years. And now, because I have a meter in that place, every place that I build or I make into apartments, I put them on their own meters so that they pay for it, right? Well, in this case, I've taken that apartment and incorporated it into my personal house. That, but I still have two meters. And I think, when you changed over to this new way of charging money?
I can see how that happened.
Okay, well, that's, that's one issue. Let's go to another. Now, I just built a house on Washington Avenue that has two meters in it, right? Somebody's gonna move out sometime. What I understand her to say is when they go and pay off their electrical bill, say they're no longer being a tenant there, they're gonna send me $41.90 anyway, and I'm not getting any service for it, because there's no water and sewer being used there.
That's gonna be vacant for three months.
I don't understand that, three months, Ian.
Well, it's like, like, we had this conversation earlier today. It'd be like if we were paying for internet access, and, okay, they turn the internet access off, but they must have paid for three months. And we're not getting service. If your phone's not working, or your internet access is not working, you're not getting service, you shouldn't be paying for it.
And you are being paid for it, because the minute, the safest comes in the middle of the month, the bills are already out. The bill starts in the middle of the month. They put it, they put that, that electrical bill right in the bill that we get. So you are being paid it, I believe.
Water, water and sewer, those buildings in advance, and there's no prorated charges on water and sewer.
Well, he's got meters.
He was talking about electric meters. I don't have water meters. There's no residential.
No, no, I understand that.
There's no residential cost.
But the bill used to come all up together. Now it comes to me. And I'm being charged it, whether somebody there or not.
I guess the easiest thing to do is, we'll have to just, we'll have to go back and look at history and find out exactly what's.
We haven't been, we haven't been charged water and sewer up until the new system came, because I would, anytime that was vacant, or whatever, I'd call and say, "Nobody's in the apartment." And there was no problem, just, nobody charged for water and sewer.
I look at this as two problems, not one. My house is one issue, because it's incorporated into one house again. But the second issue is every time somebody moves out, I'm paying, say if I don't have anybody move in for two months, I'm paying $80 for nothing.
Is that true?
The apartment has to be, that apartment has to be empty for two to three months, in order to have future debt service charges.
Why?
Because that's what the law says.
What law?
Who made that law? It was incorporated right in this office, right? They made this law regulation here. Then it, it would appear to me that it needs to be changed. Hasn't any other businessman that owns more than one apartment complained about this? Or do they keep their apartments full constantly?
Where did three months come up? What does three months mean?
Well, nobody else has complained about this?
Well, we, Doug, you were trying to talk to me about it.
What is three months? What is that?
There's no complaint to the board about it.
What's that?
There has nobody complained to the board about it since the law been active.
Well, it's only been one month.
One month.
I think maybe somebody ought to look at that a little bit more, and talk to some people, and figure out exactly what's happening here. I almost think it's probably illegal, but I don't know that, I'm not a lawyer. But you're charging me for something that I'm not getting the benefit of.
That, that law was drafted by a lawyer.
Well, maybe you oughta go talk to him.
The other, the other alternative the board could take is, if they don't wanna do that, they can physically go and turn your water off, charge you to turn it off, and then charge you to turn it back on.
Why? Why would you wanna do that? It doesn't solve anything, it doesn't make you any money. I'm just throwing out ideas here. I don't understand, actually, why it would be, why it would happen, why it would ever started to be happening.
But at our own house, what is the, what is the solution to that? We occupy two of those apartments, so do we have, we don't have to pay $83?
I would hope not.
Well, we did this month. We paid for three, three of those. One house. We should pay two, 'cause we do have a apartment on.
We should pay two, because we do have an apartment upstairs.
But you're not occupying two separate apartments, you're occupying one space which used to be two apartments, which is now one.
Yes, yes. We still have two electric meters on it, just because that's the way it was set up.
Actually, actually, let's go back up a little. I have three apartments in my house.
Right.
One is rented to somebody.
Okay.
Two, I live in.
Okay.
And it used to be rented, all three used to be rented. I took one of them back. Right?
I understand.
My family is, my family's living there.
So currently, nothing is vacant, in your, in that situation?
Not vacant, no.
Okay. So, I understand what you're saying, but, but right now, nothing, none of your apartments are vacant.
You're paying double water and sewer.
In my house.
Exactly. I'm paying, my house, I'm, no, I'm paying a hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Well, that's.
In my house.
Right.
Yeah, but you're charging the other one to the tenant.
Forty dollars, I'm charging back to the tenant. Me and Mr., I shouldn't have, I don't think I should have gotten a forty-one dollar bill. And I paid it and I think it should be.
You're absolutely right.
And I think I should be credited for my next month's, uh, payment. I didn't wanna argue with the water and sewer lady. I mean, it's not her issue to make a decision.
I say, can you check into that tomorrow?
The other thing that was.
You understand what I'm saying, am I making myself clear?
This is the first time this is a month ago.
When I called, they said there was some ten dollar a month fee because of, because of that second apartment that we took over. That I was gonna still have to pay some ten dollars extra. Well, that was all.
But that is part of your house, that's your family.
I know.
You come in the same front door.
Same front door.
Use the same.
Right.
Why would they have to pay?
They said there was some ten dollar, something fee I was gonna have to pay because we took that.
For this new house I just built, I've designed it so you put a door and make it a single-family house. Does that mean if I sell it to somebody and he makes it into a single-family house, he's gonna have to pay eighty dollars a water a month?
No, it seems to be.
Well, it wouldn't seem to me either, but, you see where my problems are rising here?
Eric, I think there had to be some sort of a mix-up in the office here.
Well, I don't know. I just, I just know I need it to be addressed.
I think it can be fixed.
So we'll have to get private.
Now that we know about it. But let's go back to the other deal for a second, though.
Three months.
Where three months has gotta be vacant. You know, I mean, would we as the village wanna pay three-month phone business? Phone service if we weren't getting the phone or the internet or whatever? I mean, I know that's the law.
I don't know the reasoning why that was written into the law.
I'd like to know why, that's what.
But it was there. It's written there and I think we can.
We got to look at it. Take a look at it.
I think that.
Maybe there's just five reasons.
Excuse me, I think they're being paid for the water the minute the, the, the electric is turned on by the person. If not, maybe it can be addressed that way. Can be brought to when that happens, so that happens.
I charge a flat fee. A flat fee. A flat fee.
Right.
And it doesn't, doesn't matter if it starts in the middle of the month or the other month.
All right.
That's fine.
That'd be fine even if it comes on the last, but it needs to be charged for that month that it comes on, not for vacant months.
Yeah, I think, you think we pay for water upfront, oh, it's correct.
That's okay, because if you rented it to someone in the middle of the month, they would pay the forty-one ninety, that'd just be the way it is.
Well, I don't know. Wait a minute, we're jumping way ahead, that has to be looked at.
Well.
I mean, I, I hadn't thought about that.
Unless they prorate it.
Cause I don't, I didn't think about it because nobody addressed it to me, it's not my business, so. But, somebody is getting something for nothing for three months, it sounds like to me, and I don't like pay that. I'm kind of cheap fellow, you know? I don't like that. And I'm sure that the other businessmen who are making a profit off of their apartments, I don't like it either. Cause that sure cuts into a lot of it. That's like a month's rent, just three months. Well, that's a stretch probably, but. That's quite a stretch, actually, if you think about it. But it's a large percentage of a month's rent.
We'll, uh, go to check and do it and get back to you.
Just to be, to read that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else wish to address the board at this time?
I'd like to. Hi, my name's Andy Bylow and I work for Clinton County. And I've sent letters out to some of the people here that we're gonna be doing a summer youth program up here. Where we're gonna go around the community, go to businesses, uh, government agencies and churches. Are just gonna look for resources for youth. And then we're gonna be putting money on GIS, which is like a global satellite system on the computer. And what it'll be is, if parents wanna go on there, they can go online, find out, you know, what activities there are for a five-year-old kid, which businesses or agencies sponsor this. And it's free advertising for all of the, you know, the businesses in Rouse's Point. We're also doing champagne next. So, these two communities, we're gonna be around. Uh, we start on Monday. I have seven youth from all over Clinton County who work with me. They're out of school, they're working on their GED. And, uh, they'll be wearing gray polo shirts. So, I just wanted to come today to, you know, introduce myself and what we're gonna be doing up here. See if you had any questions for me, I don't know, I think I sent letters to everybody up.
We got them.
We got them, okay. Any que- do you guys have any questions? No? All right, that's all I wanna do is just.
Go do it.
Introduce myself, all right, thank you.
Anybody else wish to?
Just a quick thing on this, uh, this job search thing. I was just listening to the news before I came down. I had to leave in the middle of the news because there was a six-thirty meeting, but. They had a groundbreaking or something at Stafford Middle School and they said they had their sixth superintendent in the last twelve years with their school superintendent departing. I think if you broaden your job search too far, you end up with these people who are looking to, come here, add this to their resume and move on. I think part of the value we've got with Bev and Bobby is, they've been here forever. But, I think, if you, if you keep your search within a fifty to a hundred mile radius, you're gonna get people who wanna be in this area.
Even if you went to Glenn's Ball, even for, you know.
Yeah, but, so, you know, I think.
Man, I think we, we kinda seen that with our last administrator, we kinda went.
That's why.
Out of the area and that's basically what they did, was use the stepping stone, we don't want that.
No, I think there's people, no, I've got two schoolteachers I'm looking at here. I think our schools put out some competent people in the area. And I think there's people that could fill these, these jobs that are, and, uh, like, well, let's just take the county for instance. Uh, Bill Bengo's from Lion Mountain, he's the county administrator. And then neither the deputy administrator, Mike Zerl moved back from the Albany area. There's people that might have graduated here, love to come back. And I think if you get the, the word out locally, and there's other agencies, like I know Gary Waggoner's got an employment agency, there's local govern- there's local agencies that can do this for you. And I don't think there'd be much of a fee involved.
There isn't a fee involved.
Yeah, but, but not much compared to hiring some headhunter.
Well, we don't, not a headhunter.
No, no, but, um, I think if you got somebody who's already in that line of business.
He is. Though, though, is, this is part of what he does. But we, we don't know any details about.
That's where we're gonna research.
Yeah, but I mean, there's local agencies within the county.
Right. That's where we're gonna research and see if he's what we want, or like you said, maybe one of the other agencies.
You have a very good point, Charlie.
Yes.
Cause the last thing you want is somebody here who's probably over two years and.
You're right.
There we go again.
We go through it, we go through it again.
It's happened before.
Yeah.
Point is very well taken.
Well, I have a chance again in the meeting, uh, to address it again. Minutes of the previous meeting, uh, June seventeenth and special meeting of June twenty-one. And you all have copies of the minutes, if there are any additions or deletions.
Think the motion may accept the minutes as written?
Motion made and seconded, and we accept the minutes as written. Any discussion?
You don't have it.
No discussion, all votes in favor, vote by you to sign aye.
Aye.
Don't oppose, vote to carry. You all have copies of bills, is there any additions or deletions?
No, there isn't, except that you have two lists.
I put a supplemental.
I'd like to make a motion, please, Charles.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all votes in favor, vote by you to sign aye.
Aye.
Don't oppose, motion carried. Correspondents?
Yes, we do have one piece of correspondence from Montgomery Holzberg and Ladder Company addressed to the mayor and the trustees. We wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months. Craig Strack, twenty-seven Lake Street in Rouse's Point. Please act on this member as soon as possible.
Make the motion, we accept the new member, if you'll clarify.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all votes in favor, vote by you to sign aye.
Aye.
Don't oppose, motion carried. Okay, report of mayor and trustees. All right, I'm gonna deviate from my agenda because I have a couple of things I wanna say. First of all, I wanna thank Mike O'Brien and the staff for our super job of Fourth of July. I think, I've heard nothing but good comments. And, uh, they really, really worked hard. Second of all, I'd like to extend a million praises to the Ross and White firefighters. What they did yesterday was totally unbelievable. When I saw, you know, they did one hell of a job, Matt and I fired on them, when I saw them going down the street, it made me very proud, very proud of them. They certainly did themselves proud, and I can't say enough about it. That's my deviation. Report the MUA conference, I like classroom, we had three people that, uh, four people that went. We've got three awards up there and we're out of, we're the only community there that have represented up for the people that are getting awards. There was like twenty awards. But basically, that was what the whole meeting was about. That were, that Del Berry, uh, you talked to me there. I also talked to Bob Mulane about, uh, some other personnel matters they had. I think they're gonna get some input on that. And that's on, uh, the, uh, classification for, for class, class alignment. The problems that Bambas had with handling, uh, cell service on this thing. The community of Boombills had the same problem. Their light supervisor sending us information about what is it. That's taking care of. Okay, discussion of state dock. We own it, but we have a serious problem now. We've got a sign up there, it says swim at your own risk. The other day, I saw probably forty, maybe forty kids helping, you know, like, not gonna have to walk out. Head dock, it's not safe to walk out. I mean, they stepped into one of their holes, open light, ground, we're gonna be responsible. So I talked to the superintendent, uh, we haven't done anything yet, but, asked him to get a price on these concrete barriers they use on the highways. Uh, when they, you know, when they wanted to buy the highway, they'd be coming about a ten-foot section and they're about four foot high. And you think you could get a second-hand one that's, from one of the dealers, you put that right over it, a whole box, and they're gonna walk out there. And maybe we should change the signs, no trespassing period.
And one of the signs was down today. I drove down there in anticipation of this discussion. And one of the swim and fish at your own risk signs, the one on the left, was down the ground, so.
Anybody else got any ideas on it?
No, I think it's not really good, we gotta cover ourselves. I, I don't think a four-foot high barrier, you know, you can walk it.
No. No, but, but that there. Put them signs up saying, no trespassing.
Okay. And my next item is I want to surplus four vehicles. Nineteen eighty-four one-ton Chevrolet, the utility box, better known as the orange juke. Nineteen eighty-five Ford Tempo, nineteen eighty-five Chevrolet pickup, four-wheel drive with Western plow. And nineteen eighty-eight Chevrolet S-ten. And that's just the beginning. They're surplus, we needed it.
Um, I want to, I want some direction. Do you want these advertised in the newspaper? Do you want these just posted in various places throughout the village? We all know the value of these vehicles. How much do you want me to spend on this?
If we advertise, then we'll spend more advertising than we're. Could we put a sign on?
Sure we can.
Free to.
No, but we, this probably, we could put a for-sale sign and put some buzz in the village office.
Oh.
None of them were working at anything like so.
I shouldn't be having all the work.
Probably should advertise them.
We'll probably have it.
We can put, uh, a generic type ad and put, can be seen at the blue building.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So I shall advertise it just once?
Just once, yeah.
Yes. And what is your deadline when you want these, uh, you want your bids back? Give it a month?
Yeah, give it a month.
I'll put it before the net, before that so that we can advertise, we can bring it back to you people.
We'll open the bids and. Well, twenty-second of July. And if there's no bidders, they're going to the scrap heap.
A little nostalgia with some of those vehicles.
She's saying these are wonderful vehicles.
And that's, that is all I have tonight. Uh, trustee Menard?
Uh, my first item on the agenda is, uh, announcement of which streets we'll be paving this year. Um, Pike Industries will be paving them.
Couple weeks.
In a couple weeks, yes. And they hope to be finished within a couple weeks. Uh, we will be paving Manor Drive, Kavanaugh Drive, Mountain View Drive, Smith Street, Phillips Avenue, Stewart Street, and Meyer Street. And not in any specific order.
I think, I think Kavanaugh Drive is gonna get paved first.
Those are the streets that we will be paving within the next couple weeks. And they should be finished a couple weeks after that. And I have also another announcement, um, to village residents and anyone driving by. Uh, we would like to please have no posters put on the new streetlight posts or the aluminum posts. Um, people are putting signs, posters on, yard sale signs with tape and the tape kinda sticks there and it makes them.
Look bad.
Look bad.
Takes off paint.
Takes the paint off, takes the, you know, kinda holds the water there so they rust it, you know? So if you would please put no posters on the streetlight signs. Uh, we don't care if you put them on the wooden signs, that's fine. Wooden posts, but not on the aluminum or the new streetlights. Thank you. And that's all I have for this year.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Trustee Huckrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first item is an update on water projects. So we've got both Doug and John here, so, uh, whatever.
John has prepared a summary that's got water and sewer on it. Um, I, uh, will be talking about water mostly and John will be talking about sewer.
That night, you're only getting half your salary because you only got one hand?
Yeah, it slowed me down a little bit. This whole newly wet shirt from a lighter shirt.
Ranger, is that the same one?
That's, uh, same hand.
He doesn't wanna go there.
No, I know, I do though.
Owen Calvin? Thanks. Okay, on the water project, as everyone probably knows, the foundation and site work are underway. Just when we got started breaking ground, uh, the drought ended and we got hit with some monsoons, which made it fun out there. And, uh, we've been going through some growing pains with the contractor, getting them used to the North Country soils and getting used to, uh, our style and, uh, that's an ongoing, uh, work in progress. Um, we had a good site meeting last Thursday, John came over for that and, uh, and it seems like he had a pretty good, uh, impact on the job. And we're looking to start placing concrete, uh, perhaps tomorrow or the next day. We're getting very close to that moment, we'll put concrete in the ground and start coming out of the ground. Um, right now, uh, the contractor claims they expect to have the foundation, the base, and by July eighth. And then, uh, the show will start. The work that our group witnessed down in Texas, seeing them blow up into the sky. And they're planning on doing that first lift of the wall section on July fifteenth. Uh, funding for this project, uh, the funding submissions, I nearly completed the final submission to the state. However, there is some information we still need, I need to chase Kurt and Bobby down and get some electrical details on what, uh, the conduit path is taking, et cetera. What's going to be in the ground, uh, for the water line to go along the white bear's property because the water line is sharing that space with the municipal electric. I need some details there. And also, um, we're still chasing, yes.
That's concrete ducting, right?
Concrete ducting's gonna be relatively shallow.
Yeah.
Except our pipe is bigger and deeper, so, I'm gonna talk to Bobby about that. And, um, then, uh, we need to finalize the easements. I understood that. Um, white bear's, which I believe is done, correct?
Yeah, that's done.
Okay, I, we're gonna need a paper from Tom Berning that says that. John has sent that in the mail to Tom, a copy to you. And any help from any of us, Tom Berning is very busy and hard to get ahold of, although I did see him in person today, he does still exist. he does still exist. So, so we need to, um, get this paper back from him and, uh, in order to get the funding. And, uh, the second easement is Zachary.
Oh.
And I spoke to him on the phone today, and, uh, so, he's totally cooperative, he's ready to roll, now I just got to see if we can get the document mailed there and before we have to fly down there and get him to sign, so. So tho- those are going to hold us up, cash-wise, and, uh, so we need to really get those done fast. So I'm, I'm on those, and I may ask for some help from, uh, board members and the mayor. Um, and that's all I have on water. Are there any questions?
Question from the board?
Thanks, bud. Um, this next one is very complicated. As a matter of fact, it's so complicated, we don't understand what the attorneys are trying to tell us. Uh, the retirement incentive offered by New York State. The more I read, the more confused I am. Bev did talk with our attorney, did he again? Bev, did you talk with?
I was very fortunate, I talked to him twice today.
Okay. And, uh, basically, what we have to do is enact a local law so that we can make retirement incentive available to our employees. Before we enact a local law, we do have to have a public hearing, which will be scheduled for the next meeting.
Aye.
All right. Um, in my conversation with Bev today, we talked about the parameters of the incentive, such as the, uh, window period, which time the employee may announce, uh, that he or she wishes to take advantage of the, of the incentive. And what else did we, did Lord say, Bev?
Basically, we came down to the commencement date being October seventh. If we were going to allow a ninety-day period, usually you think three months is ninety days. When you and I talked, we were talking October, November, December, which actually is ninety-two days, so that's why I moved it to October seventh.
Okay.
And then we put the ninety days in under section three, and the date it would take effect, if the board approves this and votes on it, would be your next board meeting, which is the fifteenth.
There was a question as to the difference between the date of the second of December and the thirty-first of December. Did they clarify that for you?
Uh, yes, he said that on, um, if you enacted this twelve-two, you're giving them thirty days, because, you know.
Okay, so we're okay with the thirty-two?
We're, we're fine with what we are doing. Number one would be, would be filled in with October seventh, meaning that, you know, you could avail your dates between the seventh of October and the thirty-first of December, that's your, your ninety days. Okay? Uh, with, with you and I had discussed using ninety days and not thirty days. And the date it takes effect, is it just the day that you vote on? Certainly that won't be the date that it gets to the Secretary of State, nor will be the date that it gets to New York State Retirement, but it will be the date that will go on as, as the date that this board voted on.
Okay. That up? That, oh, we have to, I think we just have to get our.
All you have to do is approve the publication of a legal notice for the next, that meeting, have public hearings.
Put that before the motion.
Second.
Motion made, the second, any other discussion? Roll call, Walt, in this? No?
No.
No discussion, all those in favor, vote, what you stand alive?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, you should have copies of three certificates of appreciation from the Municipal Electric Utilities Association, presented to Dan, Colin, Brian, Donkey, and Maryna Del, uh, last week at the, uh, meeting in, in Lake Placid. Um, I would like to request an executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Press for the motion.
Negative. Motion made, the second is, uh, roll call, Walt, Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckroll.
Aye.
Trustee Patville.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And you also should have a certificate of, a copy of the certificate of completion for Ernie Barcom, uh, through the program in pollution prevention, and his, uh, three contact hours, uh, licenses to, uh, Ernie, also, by the way, to graduate, uh, Brian, Mary Ann, and, uh, Yang. And, uh, just one more thing, uh, just like to, uh, reiterate what George said, Mike, uh, old Brian, the rest of the crew put on this weekend, who've done, heck of a job, uh, that was quite, you know, put on a show when it wants to, and, uh, reservations also to, uh, Walt and the fire department for the job they did yesterday. Reports that I heard around where it was handled is, as any professional fire department would handle it, and, and that's the, that's the, yeah, we'll help there, too. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Trustee Huckroll. Trustee Patville.
I have to agree, and, and just to let Walt know, I've also heard comments during the day today, when I was taking my walk this morning, about how well things were handled yesterday, especially the people who were in the vicinity of the drugstore at the time, and, um, people are just amazed how smoothly things went, and very, very proud, as George said, to, to have such a, uh, fire department in this community. I think you guys are a invaluable asset, and it's just impossible to put a price tag on that, it's just absolutely phenomenal, so, very good. I have an update on the planning board. I've been looking at the information, George, that you brought back, um, from, from the conference of mayors, and it's actually very, very good. And I didn't get a chance to photocopy what I wanted to give you all from it, with, with what I had kind of looked at as a preliminary plan for, for the planning board, so I'll be putting that in your boxes, and then hopefully we can take action at the next meeting, to have Tom Renan start drafting the local law that was established. So it's really, it's some of the best material that I've seen, so it's really very, very good. So if you see that in your mailboxes, you'll know that that's where it came from. I'd also like to request an executive session for a discussion of proposed litigation.
Second.
Motion made, the second, it, uh, roll call, roll call. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckroll?
Aye.
Trustee Patville?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor will decide.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Patville. Trustee Jefferson. John, did you want to discuss the sewer?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, as you're well aware, we've been working with Tom and Ernie pretty closely over the last couple of months, and I believe all these efforts are finally, uh, phoned in the, uh, the point where, uh, we know pretty much exactly what these boys need, need to unwind up there, and the L and B C requirements. Uh, we've looked over, and, uh, taken them on some tours to Vermont, go back to Malone and a number of other communities, basically. The reason that they're taking so much time there is that, um, they felt that the last, uh, the last project, that the operations people didn't have enough input. So they're very happy with what they've seen, at least, uh, to date, and I believe we're in real good shape to put a final report together. In fact, it's, uh, pretty much sitting on my desk, and I'm using a little dressing up, but, um, and this report would explain, not only to the village board, but also D E C, and anybody else that wished to look it over, what exactly was going to be rebuilt up there, and why it was going to be done, what it was going to cost, and how long it was going to take, and all that kind of detail. Um, basically, the intent there is to come up with a twenty-year improvement program. It's taken, uh, a big deal of planning time, but I think we're going to end up, the village is going to end up with what they want this time, and I think we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes. We should have that, uh, completed for your next meeting, and try and get it to you ahead of time, so that you can look it over, at least in outline form, maybe. Uh, they tend to get kind of long, drawn out, and technical, consequently, uh, what we do is usually write a short version for the village, and then a more technical version for the stating, and, um, so it should be ready two or three days before your next board meeting. The archaeologist, I spoke with the archaeologist today, and last Friday, he's completed his fieldwork last week, and he expects to have his final report done here in a couple of weeks.
They were set today down there.
Were they?
Yeah.
Well, he said he was going to be completed. I didn't talk to him Friday, or I didn't talk to him Thursday.
He didn't find any dinosaur bones either.
No dinosaur bones, that's good. Um, that, of course, is all the environmental review requirements we've been through. Um, so things are kind of shaking up, but still, I was hounding Doug tonight, and I will count, uh, Mr. Clark, about some details on electrical telephone that were not in the various streets, and in the next week or so, I hope to get all that, uh, material compiled, so we can have Maple Street ready to, uh, ready to roll along with all the rest of the work there. Uh, and I'm anticipating working with our side to see if, um, we can get the village board to act on, uh, on the bond council authorization at the next meeting, so, get some funding application finalized, and, uh, pick it up. I did walk over the plant, uh, ultimately thoroughly with Ernie and Tom on Thursday. I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to get up there, but they've done a really nice job since a lot of the older equipment was taken out, they painted the floors, and everything, starting to look like a new plant. Even though there are some more additions and stuff that are required, it's, uh, really helped out from there, but it's nice. Questions?
Yeah. Maple Street force main, could be bid prior to D E C approval. You'd be better off to hold two, four weeks' say.
Yeah, I, I.
I don't have heartburn with it, but, uh, yeah, yeah, true, hold the stuff warm here, whatever you want, how you want to put it. Anything that goes to D E C, we can be anywhere from three to four months away from getting that, any approval out of them.
Well, in fact, there's a, I guess, that, uh, the force, the Maple Street force main is not something that they would have to approve as a, as a, as a.
That's what I'm saying, but you'd say, uh, uh, you don't like where I stand on there.
Yeah, I, I know.
A whole bunch of irate citizens that, and rightly so, you know.
And I have conveyed that through Doug today, and he needs some data from other people, and he's hot and honest, so.
Because, uh, the, the electrical conduit's going to meet the sidewalk.
Well, there are some crosses in there, George, that need to be installed.
Yeah.
And, that's the kind of thing, that's the kind of need that we need.
I'm darn sure would like to, like to see us off the bid for that as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at least once a week, somebody has to.
How much time is that going to take, John, for doing it, with the work that we need to do on Maple Street?
The basic work I would expect would take somewhere in the range of three to four weeks, however, it's, it's, it's the, as I understand it, and I explained to him, so I mean, I have Bobby, if he wants to put some temporary pavement down, we'll come back the following year to rebuild the street. That's to take care of the settlement and the frosty, and all those problems that develop sometimes when you do it in one year, so, even though it's, the work itself maybe is a month and a half, a month, um, come back the next year to do the reconstruction.
That's fine. We're just, that means looking at the mean, mostly.
I was looking at the initial work, being able to finish that, this construction here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the thing, it's two to four weeks is the dust and, and the flagmen, the noise, and all that stuff, and, and following years, and, and precisely what I've, those, towards the head to rebuild the street. You've got problems along the street.
Right, right, okay.
Board, any other questions? Nice, John.
Thanks. You do? Okay, uh, I was at the sewer plant today, I brought some radios back from the Fourth of July, it looks really good, they painted the floors, and it's a little bit more banging to do, but, uh, pretty good shape. Um, I also want to thank Walter and Fire Department for a good job. We were right across from the, uh, Fire Department, the fire department, and boy, it's pretty impressive. I spoke with Bruce Ayer, and, uh, the Fire Department didn't sell out the chicken barbecue, but I guess they did pretty good, their expenses were down, and, uh, and they took some of the leftover chicken and attempted barbecue afterwards, and, um, and I guess they did sell some, two or three dollars apiece or something like that, but they ended up, they made money, and, uh, the sportsmen's club did a real good job with the beer concession, and they made money, and, uh, we didn't have any problems with the police, and, uh, Bob, Craig was pretty impressed about what happened, and, uh, everything went off, went off good. And I guess the car show was a, uh, bigger, better this year, and it was pretty well-received. We just had a couple of little problems down there, but we checked it today, and the fields, everything, they're all taken care of, there was no problem. Uh, I talked to Sandy's and her scenes, and I guess business was quite strong over the weekend, so we're pretty happy for that. And, uh, I just want to mention that Mike and, uh, the crew did a real good job here at the rec center. It was an outstanding parade, I thought, it was a good weekend, too. So we'd really like to continue the parade, so, if there's people that are interested, please, you know, get ahold of me, if we can keep something going. And that's all I got to report with, Mr. Mayor.
The, um, the village crew also did an excellent job this morning, getting the main street, another thing I found when I was walking this morning, they really were right there, very early, and so they did a very good job of getting things back to, to normal.
A lot of people in the village.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of garbage, though, all picked up real quick, so.
Yeah, they did a very good job.
Thank you, Brian. All done.
The only thing I have is, uh, Police Chief was not able to be here tonight, but he asked me to please make it known to everyone, that as long as he has been working with the police in this village, he has never had Fourth of July that ran as smoothly, and he was very proud of the professionalism of the people who ran it, and, and the way the beer tent was operating, he said he just, he's just, uh, very happy with the whole weekend.
All right, Sam?
I just want to report that starting tomorrow, taxes are up five percent now.
The joyful guy, the joyful guy. The good-nosed person. Good, oh, he's a good gentleman. That it?
Yes.
Doug?
Just two quick things, uh, the significant industrial user permit for Wyatt, uh, has been completed, and it's gone to the D E C for review. Should have it back shortly, and then we'll send a draft to Wyatt for them to review it. Uh, and on Route eleven upgrade, uh, we've completed all of the utility catalog, the catch basins, the water and sewer, that's gone to them, they're putting it on computer format, like, for free for us, as part of.
The site is?
Yes, it's a little bendy we're getting, because they're redoing the drawings anyway, so we're getting that done. Uh, so we'll be moving into the interior of the village to do the other streets, and we'll be looking to Champlin Telephone Company, because they have some kind of a computer program where they're cataloging their utilities on the various streets. Uh, I don't think that'll come for free, though, but we'll post it on that.
No, but, uh, they've, they've got a nice system up there. I was impressed with the, uh, sort of prints that they did on their, on telephone. Yeah, and they cost us.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get all that up front, and we'll talk about it.
Walter?
I'm afraid, Mr. Mayor, that I have an overpiece to bring up tonight. First of all, I lost my voice last night, so. Um, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the members of the board for your kind words, uh, we do in fact have a professional fire department, and the only difference between ours and some of the others is that we're not career, we're not shit. I want to really commend my initial interior attack team, they did a fantastic job, and I must say, they really took a beating. When they were, when they were here, it was, they're fifteen minutes, and their first fifteen minutes, they were, they were beat. Uh, but they did a fantastic job, they knew exactly what to do, and they did it. I want to commend the police department as well, they, you know, here they had all of the problems of crowd control and everything else, they were ready for the parade, and they were right there on the spot, they assisted immediately in clearing the front of the fire scene, so we didn't have any problem in placement of vehicles, we had clear sidewalks, uh, they assisted in traffic control and crowd control, and those were headaches that I didn't have, and it was fantastic. Moving on, um, Bruce had to leave, and is sending an invitation to the fire commissioners and anyone else, in which is to attend, to get together. to get together with the truck committee for my running goal is open fire to discuss truck specs. Think we have something ready to go, or anything you'd like to talk to about? On May twenty, no, June twenty-sixth, I sent the members of the board, the mayor, a letter outlining a meeting that I attended dealing with fire department liability and compensation issues. I want to reiterate that I am available to speak with you on any of these issues at your convenience. And the last thing I have is I would like to, now I plead to the public, set aside legal issues that they may, they may set themselves up for if they continue to do this. But please, please, I know some of you don't like, some of the members of the public do not like the idea of having a fire hydrant near a front yard. But please don't disguise them in brush and tall flowers so that we can't find them. The property and the lives we save may be yours.
Very well put. Very well put.
And that I'll conclude. My voice is going even.
Thank you, Walter. I'll meet the public at this time. Assess or recess?
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
Aye.
I oppose five after eight minutes.